Good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is Tuesday, September the 6th, 2022. The time is now 6:00 p.m. The regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Trinidad, will now come to order in person as well as in Zoom, so we do the virtual as well. So would you please rise for the President of Allegiance? Mr. Ruber, would you please lead us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Debono.
Here.
Griego.
Here.
Ogletree.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Item two, a full roll of the agenda. Council have any changes to the agenda that you'd like to make? Entertaining motion?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
Call vote?
Debono.
Yes.
Griego.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three, policy item, staff reports. Mr. Ruber, do you have anything to report from staff?
Nothing today, ma'am.
Okay. Item three, update from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Come forward, please. State your name for the record, please.
Jen Green. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thanks for your time. I don't think this will take even 15 minutes. But just to catch you up on what Parks and Rec is up to, and I have a little snippet for you to follow along with. Lovely picture from the corner of Fisher's Peak as seen from the wormhole trail.
Thank you.
That's my last one.
Okay.
So before I dive into this little outline, I just wanted to again say thank you. I've been in this role for several months now, and the longer I'm here, the more I understand the multifaceted, irrewoven, like, panorama things that have to do with the city of Trinidad. And I really appreciate you holding it all together for us. I think a lot goes unnoticed, so. Is that microphone on? It might be. Is it? I guess so. I can't tell.
No, I don't think it is on.
I don't think it actually is.
Well, I can use my theater voice. Yeah, it's a complex bunch of works, and Parks and Rec plays an important role. So hopefully you'll leave tonight with a sense of the urgency that we are feeling now. The process that we went through to put this little thing together, we met for a work session, and everybody had note cards, and we put our ideas on the cards and organized them. So this does represent the quorum of our Parks and Rec advisory board. There's five steps, but if you want to interrupt at any time with questions, or maybe we'll have some time at the end. So I wanted to start by just giving our current status. We have seven full board members, we have a full board, but four are new in the past year, including myself. Achievements of the past five years include a lot of work on the tennis and pickleball courts, the dog park facilities, fish stocking for the ripper, I'm assuming. The polar plunge was sponsored. We put in for Fisher's Peak State Park a lot of support there. And of course, the Trinidad Office of Outdoor Rec is up and running. That's not a complete list, but just the headliners. Some projects that have been left incomplete or in progress are the golf course tree issue. A lot of dead trees that need to be taken care of on the Trinidad Municipal Golf Course. The Old Sopris Trail is in the works, and I should have mentioned that some money did go into securing some legal support in real estate law to support, you know, furthering the development of that trail opportunity. But that is, to date, not an unfinished trail. The wormhole trash bins are unfinished, and the swimming pool cupboard never got done. So that's our current status. Let's look next at new conditions and challenges for 2022, of which there are only a few months left. So we might add 2023 to that. Things that really are meaningful to us as we approach our work together as a board are these factors. One is that the marijuana economy is shifting. And is it shifting to outdoor recreation, really? Are we going to do that? Because if we are, then Parks and Rec sits right there. Post-pandemic conditions, you know, looking at how different things are. It's hard to capture, and I won't take our time now, but how different things are in terms of demographics, prices, everything, what people want and feel they need after being locked up for two years. You know, there's a lot of things to consider with a fresh eye at this time, especially in terms of Parks and Outdoor Recreation. We, of course, have Fisher's Peak State Park. We have the Trinidad Lake State Park Master Plan Revision in process, which hasn't been done since the late 70s. The Los Angeles County Outdoor Rec and Economic Impact Study is underway, and I know the city is supporting that. And then there's just a huge need to consider a managed-use approach of the current facilities that we do have. Because here we are, and we have a lot of things operating, and we have a lot of resources out there that are in need of a strategic management approach. Not just whack-a-mole, this problem is popping up, and it's more important than this problem. So those are some of the things that I think are, that we as a group think are worth considering as we move forward as a group. Now, when we sat down and we brainstormed together, we brainstormed into two categories. Strategic priorities for our board in the next year, sort of big-picture strategies, and then specific project goals. So let's start with the strategic priorities. We really feel strongly, and you've heard from us about this, that updating the Parks and Rec Master Plan is a number-one important. And we've discussed the whys, including that it is manifest in the charter. But to get down a little bit more specifically into that, we would like to emphasize strategic, this as a strategic plan. I've heard the mayor refer to master plans as strategic plans, and it's important to make that distinction, that it's a document that will serve as a roadmap for future projects. So again, not the whack-a-mole approach, but a strategic long-range planning approach. The Master Plan will involve securing some funding and other assistance from the city. And the good news is we're already moving with that. Talitha Gillespie is here to help with some things. I've been in contact with her. And we feel that she can really support on the inventory of existing Parks and Rec infrastructure, and then data updates within the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Is it something called Level of Service, which compares us to other cities of our size? And are we offering the reasonable amount of acreage of parks, et cetera, for a population our size? So Talitha is here to help with that. But super important, and number three on this list, is our interest in collecting public input on recreational needs and projects. That's something that needs to be updated, if we can truly carry on in due diligence. So there are some possible outdoor equity grant funds to support this that we're looking at. But we're not talking about like a 10-question survey, which was what was done five years ago. More about digging deeper into the community, hosting focus groups, making sure that we get a diversity of opinions and input, including all ages. Very important in our community particularly. So anyway, we're looking at that. A second major strategic priority for us is to strengthen our working relationship with the city of Trinidad. Who wouldn't want to do that? And clarify the governing structure that holds us all together and makes us work smarter, not harder. So clarifying our purpose as representatives of the citizens of Trinidad. I think that there's room for that right now. Increasing our responsiveness to local needs via the Capital Projects Fund, which is a 1% tax. Cheryl was wonderful in providing the last minute some budget tail on where monies have been spent over the past few years. And we want to do the right thing and, you know, help lead the city in the right direction in response to that 1% tax and how to use it. A case study in thinking about strengthening our working relationship would be just to discuss a little mini case. That would be the wormhole trash can that doesn't exist. We don't have one there. We used to, and I think it got abused, and it wasn't bear-proof, and so it was taken away. And Jared put in for a new one, and we had a temporary one there, and it got ransacked. We're still waiting. Somebody called somebody. Anyway, we're working at getting it done, but we still don't have one. It's been several months. So we have a major asset sitting out there that people are pulling off a highway to use. The wormhole trail is advertised on websites, you know, all trails are on. So people know where it is. It's worth thinking about keeping it looking sharp, but I'm not sure how to better do that. So this is one of our strategic priorities. This isn't like a complaint session or a naysaying, it's just, I think we can do this better. So that's one of our priorities. We are super behind the idea that's been shared here already about increasing communication and collaboration with other advisory boards, because a lot of times we overlap in what we do. And then solidifying our working relationship with the Trinidad Office of Outdoor Rec and our City Council liaison, Mr. Thurman, just to make sure that we're making good on those connections. Again, smarter, not harder. Finally, some of the specific projects that the board has expressed interest, not only personal interest, but voiced for the community interest, voicing for the community are, and I'll just list them. 10 miles of trail, I put that in quotes because that's what we're looking to achieve for a population our size. We should have 10 miles of trail interconnected within close proximity of the center of our town. That's just a good measuring point for a town that has healthy outdoor recreation economy. We would like to support the Boulevard Edition getting completed. Look again at year-round indoor swimming facility, whether it be covering the old one or thinking again about, you know, rethinking what that might mean. But having year-round swimming was the top priority in the survey that we conducted the last time we did, which was four years ago. Partnering with a purgatory watershed partnership, development of river-based recreation is a high priority for us, including play areas, fishing, rafting, et cetera. Pickleball facilities expansion. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the United States of America, and we've already moved forward getting some bids, but talking to Trinidad High School about resurfacing those courts and extending on that opportunity that always already semi-exists. Wayfinding signage for trails, parks, and the community center to sort of tie our community together with some signage and to help visitors find their way around. Upgrading sidewalks was mentioned by more than one of us in and around Parks and at the community center. Especially ADA, especially ADA consideration as well. More programming for youth and young adults. This one keeps coming up, and I know, I know that's a whole topic in and of itself, but I think it is something that Parks and Rec can look at. And finally, Trinidad Municipal Golf Course. There's, that's one of our most beautiful assets and is outdoor rec assets in the city, and it's not cheap to run a golf course. The trees are the most imminent danger to golfers out there, and hopefully this winter we can get a move on with that. But again, that's one of our priorities. So how did I do? I forgot to time myself.
You did good.
Do you all have any questions?
Questions from council?
Jen, you're implementing the strategic plan in different phases, correct?
We don't have.
According, well, according to how much revenue you have to work with, if some of the grants don't follow through, do you have any other ones that you're working on? Any availability?
Oh, to get money to help with creating the plan?
Right.
I think we can cobble some things together, and the mayor and I spoke about an opportunity that I'm not sure how it's coming along for a little slice out of a separate fund. I could like to speak to that, mayor. Then there's Talitha, and then there's this equity grant. That's where we're standing right now. All I know for sure is we can't do it by ourselves. We can't do it adequately by ourselves. You wouldn't want a document that was written by seven volunteers of like different backgrounds.
So I can, you know, I can speak to that. Last week, I attended the Colorado Outdoors thing that they had at Sexy Pizza. And they have grants, it's a no-match, and they do have money available for exactly that purpose. So I think that is probably the best avenue for you to seek additional funding, but you need to get down to.
Yeah, outdoor equity grants is one of those.
Can I just speak a minute after? If those grants, Mr. Mayor, I think one is the 31st for application, and the other one is December 31st for application, so.
Yeah, there were some deadline dates, so that you need to look into. You can apply for them to get Talitha to help you.
How closely does your committee work with Mr. Chatterley? Does he come to meetings and your meetings? Because it seems like he would be a great asset to help you maneuver some of the issues and questions that you have.
You are working closely with Jared.
You know, it's.
In particular, on the pickleball.
Okay, yeah, and he mentioned, he sent council an email mentioning that his idea about using the old tennis courts at the high school for pickleball, I think that's a great idea.
Right.
You know, it's, I think our biggest problem in the past has been, we've never really been able, we don't communicate well with one another. And when I see the, I know about the indoor swimming pool last, it was a top priority. But Steph really did look at that. Were you ever apprised of what we came up with on that? Because Mr. Chatterley knows what was going on.
That was before I got here.
Okay.
Maybe you guys didn't speak to that, but.
It was just, we were in discussion. So what happened is, there has been work on it, just to let you know, let the community know. There is work on trying to cover the existing swimming pool. Mr. Chatterley found out that it's not feasible, it's not the right pool for that cover. So what we're going to have to do is purchase land someplace else, build another swimming pool, and cover it there, and that's a massive project, so. I didn't know if you knew that.
Yeah, yes, and you know, it's also a question of, is that the best investment to acquire year-round swimming, to cover something? And maybe the answer is no, and so.
Yeah, I just wanted you to know.
No. If that becomes a top item, just as an example of our strategic plan, we understand that it may be years out.
Right.
But that's in the plan. So we're not picking up that flag again and waving it like, let's pay attention over here again, remember this thing, you know? And we've got a plan, and everybody, it's shared, and everybody can look at it and refer to it, and the priorities that are in there. But that would be, you know, a long range, and so there's a lot that would go into something like that.
But I just want you to be aware that we as council, we're aware of what the community wants. And we tried to make it happen at that time, but it just wasn't feasible.
I appreciate that, too, and I also think part of what happened was there was a need for bids, and it was hard to come by. And, you know, that the process of finding competitive bids and knowing that it's apples to apples, it was complex. Agreed. Yeah. Thank you. I was gonna say something else, but it's still in my mind.
You know, along with that, what Karen's talking about, you know, the maintenance would be incredible for that expense. And that was one of our big issues, is how we handle that. You know, swimming pools are really tough.
The way the pool is now would involve three lifeguards instead of one in the winter time. They're all things to think about, and you know, a more long-range approach, I think, is.
Well, you know, that would be a draw for, you know, out-of-state and out-of-town visitors, and they already come to the outdoor pool now, which is only open a couple months a year. Almost three, maybe. But, you know, definitely we have people coming here, using the pool, and having that would be an asset for the city, and I think would go with the plan of making it a recreation destination, it seems like.
I wanted to say that, yes, we do communicate and work with Jared. It's very important. I bug him all the time. And he printed these out for me. But he's in his first, you know, just barely around his first year. So like, just honing the wheels a little bit and making sure that the community, so that Jared doesn't end up just having to spread all these messages, you know, across and then wait to hear back, and you see, sees me, that that's one step towards better communication. But, you know, like, look back to the wormhole. He reached out immediately when we came to him with pictures of garbage all over the parking lot. And he reached out to people in other departments. Like, I can't even name the departments and the people, but if we all knew that better, we could communicate better and maybe prioritize better.
I didn't want to interrupt you, but Bob Holder, have you talked to him? Because the state is having issues with the bears, and the state is giving money to put bear-proof dumpsters out, and they're the ones doing it. You might talk to Bob Holder, maybe he could get a couple up there that would help.
Yeah.
And it would be, you know, Bob's pretty good, and I'm sure he would get on it right away. But they did say that the whole state's having issues, and they want to get some bear-proof dumpsters out there and stuff. So that might be a solution for that problem.
Jen, call me. I've got Bob Holder's phone number, so.
I've got, we had Bob Holder Day in June. It was our trail birthday, yeah, the wormhole was dedicated to Bob and his birthday. But Julie Newson also has access to some funds, and she might have an extra bear can. This is like, this is what we're dealing. And if that works out, then that's great. But we do network as best we can, and that's one of our strategic priorities, is to continue to network so we don't stumble over each other in the dark.
Other questions?
Ms. Green, I just wanted to thank you for putting the work into giving us this information. It's a very helpful overview of what you're doing. What are some ways that you feel like outdoor recreation or Parks and Rec overlaps with other advisory boards?
Well, tourism. I came to the tourism presentation, and I work with Marty sometimes as well. For sure, because outdoor rec is a tourist attraction. I don't want to go out, history and the history, what are they, what's their official name?
Historic preservation.
Historic preservation, because that, I've talked before about, what is a trail? You know, trails have a lot of meaning. It could be just like historic walks through town. There's a map for it, and a QR code, and a guide, and some signage that is support, that raises up the history of a town and makes it even more stand out as an outdoor, not just an outdoor rec, but historic outdoor rec destination. So those two comes to mind?
Okay. I know wayfinding is another thing that I think tourism has worked on, and I think Main Street has also worked on that. So that's something that I think a lot of our boards are wanting to have some input on, and I would like to see some movement on that. I appreciate that you want to do things strategically, too, that I think is really wise, and I'm very encouraged that your board is thinking that way. And how can we, as City Council, help you do that? Is it just with funding for the strategic plan development, or is there any other way?
Well, I think the first step really is just the listening sessions that you're hosting and the communication. In my mind, collaboration for collaboration, everybody wants that, but you can't have that without communication. So communication comes first, and then we can collaborate. So being able to communicate and share our thoughts and make sure that we're keeping this fresh before you, because I know you have complex duties. But ultimately, I've really got to put all my chips on the master strategic plan, getting support for that. You know, even if it comes to write some grants, that we can get some support from the city to sign off on that or just, you know, write a letter of support, et cetera, that would be.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, Jean, how's it going? I just wanted to say thank you for your due diligence, also with the support team back there. They invited the board, they've been doing a good job of keeping me informed that we've been meeting, and I think this is a good way to get the ball rolling. Sure, we'll definitely try to get you some funds right now. Get the ball rolling, and then hopefully we can just stay on top of it and just do routine maintenance as we go on.
Yeah, and Mr. Thurman, I want to thank you, too, because the approach that we've taken has been slow and steady. Wins the race, and we've just been moving, you know, with attention. Thank you for your.
I had no questions, but I did want to thank you and the whole board for all the work that you do. It's vitally important, and thank you for the presentation.
Thanks, thanks for your.
Ms. Green, the outdoor rec is vitally important to what we're trying to accomplish as a city of Trinidad, you know, as someplace, a destination. And because we have the Space Great Project, we have this, Outdoor Rec, and it's vitally important that in moving in that direction, that we try to work together. And still, like I said, the Outdoor Rec, tourism, several of these boards interplay in what they could do. One of the things that we have considered doing, and we'll be approaching that in the near future, is to try to probably combine some of the boards and commissions. Because right now, you know, sometimes we have troubles even filling some of the seats. But if there's, maybe we can combine a few of the boards and commissions together. We'd have full boards and also some additional input. And then it might eliminate some of that crossover that you were talking about. So I think that's going to be really, really super important, that we try to maybe do something like that in the near future. But I think that one of the things that we're going to have to do with this is to probably have a work session with the Outdoor Rec and you guys together, so that we can actually sit down and kind of hash through this entire plan that you have here. I think you have a very good plan. I think you did some good work here. And I think it's something that we're going to have to do. Because like, I know that some time back, Aaron, Mr. Rubenson, was saying, okay, what does it look like when we become a destination point for our outdoor recreation? So I think that this is a very vital step in working together with you guys to try to, you know, get money for that master plan, your strategic plan, and all these other ideas that you have. And so I think that it's vitally important that we really pursue this now rather than later.
Great, great. I wasn't speaking, but I just wanted to mention, since Councilwoman Vogletree asked a question a long ago, as far as Parks and Rec, you know, you talk about getting more tourism and the economy. It's very important, obviously, but also community health and mental health, as well as physical health of the people who are already here and those that come to live here. And that's a big part of how that happens, I think.
You know, one of the biggest things that, and I get confused with this, this would be an approach or not approach, but an item, you know, we hear from the community, there's nothing for the kids to do. So I think that would be one area that we really need to find out exactly, what does a community want, and what are their needs? Because I look at other communities as to what do they have, you know? So I think we just need to get figured out. So I think we just need to get figured out.
Yeah, you know, looking at this list there now, have you, since we have a city manager that's going to solve all our problems. It would be nice to go in and talk to him, because there's a lot of stuff on that list that our city can take care of. Uh, you know, the golf course trees, the upgrade on the sidewalks, because we're doing that project anyway. Uh, those are things that I think we can get done right away. And I, I think if you've got the city manager, we definitely can work out a lot of those projects. And that's what we are looking for. He's supposed to have the answers.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Green, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the work.
I appreciate your, your time and attention. Thank you.
Petitions or communications all are written. Do we have anyone signed up? Mr. Schultz?
Here I am. Yeah, I would like to thank the Parks and Rec for cutting trees at the golf course. I've probably hit everyone that you've cut. And the stumps are still left though, but they can be taken there along with some new trees planted. Anyways, I'm back to you guys. I've been to Montego Lake, it's phenomenal even now. It's not a bike house, you know, you just drove by it and say, ah, you know. So it's, somebody's doing a hill. But I've been a park, I've been a golf member for 45 years. I paid dues of, you know, I feel that, that the way the restaurant is run or the lack of a restaurant is, is a concern. They're all talking about a golf course. If you don't have a restaurant, you don't have any social activity, you don't have, you know, there's, there's not a pro shop, there's no lessons. It's hard for me to tell you how to build a driving range or to have instructions. But the city owning the restaurant, the proper, they probably had, what, seven, eight years, maybe? My guess. But it was rent pretty well for a while. It kind of slipped down, slipped down, slipped, now it's balancing a, a dive bar. I hate to use the term, but it's a dive bar. I would think with the grant monies available, with the, I don't know, I don't know how they remodeled the first time, if there's capital improvement gains, if it was, uh, I don't know where the city got money. I'm pretty sure it just sold this purchase it. Uh, I don't know if the golf course really wanted it, but they purchased it and they ended up running it. Well, it hasn't been doing right, so, you know. But I would like to see if they're want it, if they want to have a committee, I'm pretty sure I could get a few members to, to serve on it. And, but I would think a professional southwestern architect could improve that raft building to make it look like, you know, maybe it was built that way to begin with. I think the patio needs to be enclosed, the patio that faces the golf course. It's, it's seating for another 50 people, but the way they've got it set up, there's no seating for anybody. There's, I don't know, 30 people, we probably stuff in there and it's loud. It's not, you know, the city tried, they, they updated the restrooms, the kitchen, the bar area, but it needs to be finished. Somebody say, I don't know where we get the money from, but, I don't know if you guys have these licenses, but I've talked to you guys in the, we've talked to Lassie, he has a convention with liquor licenses. He says, I don't know, the city, the golf course wasn't born with liquor licenses. They inherited them. Damn. I don't know. These abilities, you know, a little bit of studies. Whether there can be two licenses, whether you can have the pro shop, which is defunct, you know, it's still a little building, but if you could sell the goober out of there. And I'm not asking for five-star dining, but I'm asking for a hamburger. I think somebody could make a bill of it. Maybe not seven days a week, but I think Dave Grego was running it five or six and doing pretty well. You know, it's a gray area for a buffet or brunch or, you know, a happy hour.
Do you have anybody in mind to run it? I mean, that's, we don't, how do we get somebody to run it? You know, I was on the council when we bought that from the deal.
You have to advertise outside the problem news.
Well, I'm sure, but it's, it's really tough. The rest, you can ask.
Let's, let's take that into consideration. Let's go and take that into consideration, like these petitions you just, for the listeners to you, what, what your concerns are, but we'll take that into consideration.
I said I would broach about everybody here and they're probably going to say, here comes this guy.
And for the record, that was Mr. Tom Schultz, golfer extraordinary.
Yeah, no, I've, I've made my share of golf balls and people ask me, says, huh? How'd you get these tournaments? I go, well, I hit a lot balls. And they go, there's some driving in here. And you go ahead and you go pick them up. You know, I've taught my two boys how to play. I got one left playing, but the other one played for quite a while. And it's, there's no high school golf. You talk about recreation, it's, it's not the hardest sport to learn, but it's time-consuming.
Is there a college program?
There used to be, but somehow we've got a couple presidents back, they dissolved it for a cross-country team or something. But I went there on a golf scholarship. I mean, there's, you know, there, there is bigger steps than just TSBC. It is possible. No, there's, there's really anything, there's no little kids, there's no, you know, and we're even giving younger.
Like I said, we'll take all this into consideration and see what you have to make. All right, thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you.
Item five, consent agenda, 5A. Uh, it was just informed that we should table the special meeting minutes of August the 29th, 2022. So that would just entail the approval of the regular minute, the regular meeting minutes of August the 16th, 2022. Uh, so when the chairman makes motion, I'll need a motion to table the special meeting minutes of August the 29th. Item B, set public hearing at 6:00 PM on September the 20th, 2022, for consideration of opting in or opting out of the family program. That was from Proposition 118 that was established by the State of Colorado in 2020. Item C, appointment of Mayor Phil Rico to the CML Policy Committee and Mayor Pro Tem Aaron Ogletree as alternate. Item D, appointment of Audrey Garrett as acting city manager in the event of city manager's temporary absence or disability pursuant to Home Rule Charter Section 6.3. Item E, resolution approving submission of a grant application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs to seek funding for the construction of the Northside Infrastructure enclosure at the Fox West Theater in furtherance of its eventual total rehabilitation for public use and enjoyment. Will we not ask there if we have that in writing from them? If that's a possibility. Item F, approval of bills for $1,746,000, $104.12. Item G, approval of payroll, September the 3rd, 2022 through September the 16th, 2022, in the amount of $436,805.98.
I'd make a motion to accept the consent agenda approval with the exclusion of the special meeting minutes of August 29th, 2022.
Second?
Second.
Come up both, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Diego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six, public hearing, 6A, public hearing for consideration of ordinance, vacating part of Alley D, lying in lot in blocks, in block 126, lots 14 and 21 of the original town site to the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. Hearing is now open. Ms. Hall?
City Mayor, Council, um, this is in consideration of vacation of right-of-way portion of Alley D, which is located in Lot 4, Block 126, at 225 North Commercial Street in Trinidad. Uh, Mayor, I think you, this went before Council be, the previous week and, and was here for consideration. And, uh, we want to approve this and provide access to Sister Blandina Park, which is just adjacent to this property.
Okay, we do have a representative from Cape Hampton?
Yeah, I'm Tim Lam, General Counsel. Good to see you.
Any, any thoughts?
Um, the thoughts are, the, this is a very small piece of property. It's about 17, 1800 square feet is all. So it's like 0.8 acres, 0.038 acres. Very small. It's really not been used by the city. So you know where the old brewery building is. Part of this goes along the backside and the side towards Holy Trinity Church. That's the Alley D part. Then it extends out into the garden, um, small ways. It's, um, it's not very far. It's 38 feet, something of that nature. So it's, again, it hasn't been used. It would be useful for us when, when Mike Downton was the city manager, we had talked to Mike, um, and the city wanted us to give them a permanent easement for the gas line that runs from Plum and it runs along the back of the brewery, which we agreed to do. When, it hasn't been done yet, but Mr. Downs, I just had a conversation about it today. Um, and so with that, your, your piece, this, this piece we're asking to be vacant, it was landlocked by our property. So it has no, no use to you and it just closes it off for us. So, um, we will then, the city will then have a permanent easement to be able to access a gas line. And then to the east of the Holy Trinity Church, we have a block of property that's, I think it's 84 by 43 feet or something that will give the city an easement of two. It can be an area that if you need to work on that gas line, you'll have an easement for. So that's not part of this. We're just asking to be vacant because it really is not a used piece of property. It's very tiny. It's a city building that was used, it's always been landlocked.
Questions from Council?
I have that.
No questions. Is it this, this highlighted area on?
And the piece to the right, that little trapezoid looking piece?
This over here?
Yes. That, it's that piece.
Okay.
All of that. Again, it's, it's not usable, it's not really accessible.
Okay, and it doesn't limit public access anywhere?
No, it does not.
Thank you, that's, okay.
It does not limit any public access.
Is that just for foot traffic? What are you going to use that for?
Um, in part, yeah. It'll eventually be foot traffic, um, uh, from church, from park, to, to get to Common Street or to get to.
So it's not like a drabble bowl?
No, it's not drabble. It's not drabble bowl at all. So it's not for, it's not going to be for vehicle traffic. It's really just to close it up so we can use that piece. You know, basically kind of our, we have a plan that eventually we have to pull down that back wall of the brewery, because it's not structurally sound to develop and what we build it to some extent. So, um, we may, the park may come back a little bit at that point, but right now we don't want to do that. So it really is just to use, give us a little bit, 1700 square feet's not very much, to use that, so it'll, it'll add to the park.
I was wondering, in the packet, Exhibit A, is that the easement that is going to describe the protection of the gas line?
It is the legal description. I don't believe there's a reservation of the permanent easement in that document.
Okay, so that's, that's the description of what we.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm going to evacuate it, that's correct.
And that easement would be done afterwards?
Yeah, we're working on it now.
Yes.
We, we've agreed to do it and, and we just have to get the document. It's a simple, simple document, probably one page that we just need to put together.
And, and then this, from the map, and I think it's already been asked, but this will not alter anyone's access to the career, you know?
No. We own all the property that surrounds that.
Correct.
So it, we're not affecting anyone's rights.
Correct. And I have no further questions.
I have no questions. I just think it's a good idea and let's get that easement taken care of. I'm going to say about it, so. Anyone in the audience, anyone in the audience or listening to the official, you want to speak for or against the ordinance?
Mayor, this is other. The legal description does in fact identify the easements to the city so that they're, they are reserved in that document. We won't have a separate easement document.
Thank you, Attorney.
Anyone else? Hearing is now closed. 6A1, second reading of the ordinance, vacating part of Alley D, lying in, uh, lying in Lot 126, lots 14 and 21, the original town site to the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. Hearing is now open. Ms. Garrett, do you have anything you want to add to this?
I have nothing to add from previous discussions, just that this will allow delivery in the city of Trinidad and it's something that's been allowable in the state for a couple of years now.
Okay. Council, have any questions?
No questions. I have a question. Um, it says that it's allowable to private residences and I just wondered, does that include hotels? So if someone's staying in a hotel, can they call and get a delivery considering that space as a private space or is, is that not included in this?
I think that delivery can go anywhere from what I gather from the ordinance.
Because it specifies that it goes to private residences, uh, conduct deliveries to private residences within the city of Trinidad's corporate limits. And so I, I just wondered, is that?
Mr. Downs, you have a?
Well, I, I would say it would be up to the, the hotel owner. I think if they would prohibit delivery of marijuana, then it would be prohibited. But if they allow it, and I don't know that they would necessarily know it was happening. I mean, you know, some hotels have access from like the parking lot or what have you, but, but I would say that it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be prohibited automatically. I understand that a person running a hotel room does not have a private possessory, well, they have a, they have a possessory interest, but on a private ownership interest. So I would say it would really be up to the hotel owner if they have a policy regarding marijuana delivery.
Okay. I just was curious about that.
I was right that, you know, some kind of language was not put in there in the first place. That was, that's interesting.
And I, I don't know like places that deliver alcohol. I mean, I don't know if they have considerations to whether or not they want, you know, delivery from businesses to individual rooms. I, I don't know what the policies for hotel owners on that either.
I, I just remember when we were looking at the state regulations, it required the delivery person to identify the person they had to show identification, but I don't remember talking about that it had to be at a house in particular. And I noticed that was in their system.
Aaron? Airbnb's got stuff too.
Yeah.
About that very thing, that precludes hotel stuff for what it's worth.
Other questions?
No questions.
No questions. Anyone in the audience or virtually will speak for or against the ordinance?
Can I chime in from Zoom?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Mark Slime. I also work in cannabis policy, so a little bit to the question that you had asked. The state regulation says one thing, the state law regarding delivery says another. And private residents has been, as well as commercial, uh, buildings have been issues in Denver for delivering cannabis to people that are in, in town visiting. So we, we may relook at that and perhaps reline it with what the state law says, which just defines it as a dwelling, which would include and rather than preclude hotels or other similar types of places. And then the other thing I just wanted to ask is, is anybody discussing at all, uh, looking at, at how these models have looked in places like Aurora or Denver, which are the only other two cities that have done it, but they've done it in distinctly different ways. And there's very big differences in how the delivery models have rolled out. In Aurora, they, they kind of gave it to the existing dispensary owners, which is what seems to be that we're proposing here, whereas Denver has taken more of a social equity route in offering these licenses to, to, to folks that have existed under the new social equity law, which are, are folks that have been disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs or arrested previously for cannabis and then left out of the industry with no opportunity to compete against a lot of these Denver folks that take the money right out of Trinidad back to Denver. So just some, some food for thought, but I'm, I'm curious if it's come up at all in your deliberations.
I think what we'll do is, at this point is.
that we're proposing here, whereas Denver has taken more of a social equity route in offering these licenses to folks that have existed under the new social equity law, which are folks that have been disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs, or arrested previously for cannabis, and then left out of the industry with no opportunity to compete against a lot of these Denver folks that take the money right out of Trinidad back to Denver. So just some food for thought, and I'm curious if it's come up at all in your deliberations.
I think what we'll do is, at this point, is, you know, we'll just take and use the current law that's in place, and any additional stuff that comes up. Maybe that's something we need to discuss down there.
Sure. And we adhere to the former. You have to have a license in order to deliver, but certainly could consider also the latter.
I think maybe it would be worthwhile to see, like the gentleman says, to look into, see what else the city of Denver is doing, and bring it forward, just to take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Hearing is now closed. 6B1, second reading of ordinance, enacting Section 14-167 of Article 13, Chapter 14, to permit delivery of regulated marijuana in Trinidad. entertain a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I'm just wondering if what we're saying is based on that comment and the question that I had, that we are thinking about revising it in the future if we need to?
If we need to.
Okay, all right. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Call vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item 6C, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending Article 13, Chapter 14, to adjust cultivation fees due to the city on uncultivated retail marijuana. Hearing is now open. Ms. Garrett? Ms. Garrett?
I'm sorry. Mayor, city council, this item is to reduce our current cultivation fee from the $25 per pound that we're being charged to 5%. And it would only apply to products that's transferred outside of our corporate city limit. You'll see that this ordinance has been amended, and I'm asking you to consider it with the amendment, so that it's very clear that it's due only on that which is transferred outside of the corporate city limit, as it was previously confusing. And so I'm asking for your consideration to amend it.
Okay. Questions from council?
No.
No. No questions, okay. Ms. Garrett, I was just wondering, I know that if the 5% is not paid, there's a time limit that we would have to go in and close the facility, or shut them down. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you know what that timeframe is?
I don't. But if there was a non-payment of taxes, that's always an option. Your warning said, I'll shut up, mayor, but I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you for shutting up. I'm kidding, I'm sorry.
The other thing that's interesting about this is that, because of the direction that we're going, the city does not have any permitting requirements that we're going to initiate, correct?
Permitting requirements.
For the cultivation of, like, that was... Maybe that was not for that. Okay, I'll leave that off.
Okay.
Anyone virtually or in-house wants to comment?
I did have a quick question. I know several constituents had approached me and had questions about this. Agra, would you mind, for the record, just reiterating the tax on marijuana that this does leave in place, and just give a brief discussion on that, just for the public record, please?
Sure. What this leaves in place is a cultivation fee, it's not a tax, of 5% per pound on the various products. And it's based on the average market rate. In Colorado, it defines what that average market rate is per quarter. And so it'll be based on the, it's only due to the city when the product leaves our corporate city limits to, for instance, another confused product location, or another retail store outside of our corporate city limits.
And then, just if you don't mind, just briefly stating the tax that still remains as well, because there's been some continuing about that.
With sales tax?
The sales tax, sorry. They're frequently convoluted.
Oh, okay. So this is, again, the ordinance that we are talking about is not a tax, it's a cultivation fee. In addition to that, the city has its regular sales tax that's charged on all products throughout the city, which is 4%. And then marijuana, retail marijuana also has an additional 5% sales tax, and that's on all retail products sold in the city.
Thank you, honor. Thank you for your clarification.
You know, we have someone here from the marijuana industry, Mr. Ling. Do you have anything that you'd like to comment on, how this would help?
Yeah, I can, if you, yeah.
Sure. I'd like to hear from you.
Questions?
If you have questions for me, then, to start that way, I guess.
No, just how this would help, and just...
So as of right now, in the marijuana industry, everyone that's anywhere involved in it can see how it's low. I just read an article today that painted a bleak nationwide thing on it, all dealing with taxes, mostly federal, but taxes nonetheless. So here in Trinidad, I think on the pro side, the helping the smaller, especially the smaller cultivations, keep those doors open, and keep those people employed that are doing, working for those smaller ones, to sell to their own shop. I mean, right now, if you're someone like TCHU, most likely, per se, who doesn't have a huge grow, it's, they probably employ 15 people back there. If this keeps going like it is, there'll be 15 jobs gone there. It'll be cheaper for them to just buy it elsewhere. And that will keep happening. And so on that end, that's lowering these taxes for now, for this little rut, or whatever it is, until it shakes out, is a huge deal for people like that. On the bigger grows such as myself, it will, it'll help us, you know? Most of my stuff is, I buy it, I sell it to myself, because I have to pay market average on it, no matter what. It doesn't, I mean, like, for me, right now, I had a call from Kraft, who wanted, who's a straight competitor of mine, out of the city, and they're like, we're willing to buy all your stuff from you. And this is literally yesterday, actually, yesterday. We started talking, and I was like, great, cool, I got a whole bunch of stuff to sell you. And this is the legitimate price that they wanted to pay for, $25 a pound. I have 20, sorry, $28 a pound. So that leaves me $3 after I pay your guys' tax. And then I have to cover the state tax with that, and all the money I spent in growing 11,000 plants. And she was like, we'll give you a little bit more, and yada, 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 and whatnot. I mean, so that's the, that's the world I'm facing at this point right now. Luckily, I sell it to myself, I process it, and I turn it into concentrates, and I ship it off, which changes the equation for me a little bit. But with prices being, and that was an extreme low, I'm not going to lie to you, they were trying to get me to sell at that low price. That is, they were, because a lot of grows are going out of business throughout the state. They are going out of business because of that, and they are fire selling everything, is my opinion on it, to just take, get what they can, shut their doors, move on. So, you know, for us here in Trinidad right now, with how it is, that 25 is a tough thing. The state's 15. So, you know, a $25, $28 a pound, you know, I'm looking at like $4 or $5 for the state, possibly whatever that is, and 25 for you guys puts me over the mark, and I've just lost money on it. So it would help tremendously everyone in Trinidad that is growing and selling. It does, on the bad end for you guys, it does lower your tax revenue that you're getting from us, but it does help us in the, in the short term kind of thing. I, I think the market is going to bounce back. It just, it just literally can't stay this way. There was a grow, and the article my brother sent me today was, one of the largest grows in the state, in Beulah, just went up for sale. And they were, they had about 4,000 or 5,000 plants less than we do. And we're growing 10,800 out there, I believe, right now. So, and that's, they said that was one of the largest, so that would put us among the largest. I think the largest is Green Solution, to be quite honest, for cannabis care, whatever, Columbia Care, whatever they are, I can't know who bought them this time. So, but they're huge. And so that would help all of us keep the jobs going, not laying people off for slower sales and whatnot. It would be a huge advantage for us, so.
I just wanted to hear from you, I think, or we did, wanted to hear from you, but...
There's any questions?
Is there any questions from Mr. Sugar? No.
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
$25 a pound or...
$28. No, a pound.
A pound?
$28. And that is for trim. Let me reiterate, that is for trim.
Questions from council?
This time last year, trim was selling, just to get a perspective, this time, high-quality trim that I was buying, I was paying, around this time last year, I was paying $350 a pound. That is where it is.
Question, Mr. Griego?
Let me say, what percentage of trim is not sellable?
It's, that's a eye of the beholder kind of thing.
I'm sorry.
Eye of the beholder, like, if you have a really good extraction, or you can get it really, really cheap, like, so the trim, what the trim usually goes for, we'll buy it, people like me, an extraction company, will buy it. And the trim, and that's the byproduct of the buzz. And then they'll turn that into a distillate, concentrates, whatnot, and then a MIP like me will do that, and we'll sell it as waxes, shatters, distillate, or we'll, and the distillate and whatnot, we'll sell to edible companies that will then make edibles and whatnot like that. So...
So is it a low-end component?
It's, no, I mean, at one point, it was considered low-end component, but you can get it out of anything. What you're looking for is the return on it. So like, the market average on a, if you get a 15% return on some trim, that's about market average. So if you have 10 pounds of trim, and you get a 15% return on that, you're going to get whatever that is, I can't even...
We're getting in the weeds of some stuff, so, Ms. Garrett, did you have, I mean, Ms...
I'm sorry.
Ms. Griego, did you have a question?
I almost forgot my question.
I'm sorry.
No, I know what I was wanting to ask, your opinion. You said the market's going to bounce back? Why do you say that? How...
And this is just my opinion. When I look at it, I mean, when this whole started, is when gas prices were around $5.
Okay.
Gas prices are dropping, and I'm seeing pickup in it. I mean, I think the whole town, you just, once you guys get your taxes, and whoever does the taxing, you know, look at those this, this, this next month, on the 20th, and see if there's been an increase in tax revenue. I know my shop over here in Main Street, it's, it's probably, maybe, I wouldn't quite say doubled the sell, daily sales from last month even. And so things are picking, people are traveling. Everyone blames New Mexico is one of them. I think that's probably like third or fourth on why things are slowing down in Trinidad. The high taxes, people not really knowing what's going to happen. And then the next thing, which is almost as big as that, is, state of Colorado produced, I think it was 1.2 million pounds of product. Other states coming online, not traveling, and the abundance of product that the state has produced. Places that are shutting down at $28 a pound, grows are shutting down. And how long it takes for this product to get out of the system, and not, and not enough new stuff, then the demand is going to go back up, and it's going to be a selling market and not a buying market.
Makes sense. Where's the other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
How much, how many pounds you got to sell to get it to $28 a pound?
How much do I need to grow at what price point is the way to that? I would, a lot.
Got it, okay.
A lot, to, it's, it's, so...
Any questions? Mr. Shirley, thank you for the information. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Aaron Shirley.
Anybody else? Hearing is now closed. Item 6C1, second reading of an ordinance amending Article 13, Chapter 14, to adjust cultivation fees due to the city on cultivated retail marijuana. entertain a motion?
So move.
Second? Any further discussion? Call vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item D, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance repealing and reenacting 12-12 of Article 2 of Chapter 12 of the Code of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, for a purpose, for the purpose of adjusting the rates for electric service, power, and energy. Hearing is now open. Mr. Pacheco, would you come forth and give me, give us some information, please? By the way, I guess I did it. What do you see the update on the...
Good evening, mayor, sitting council members and staff. For those who don't know me, I am Dave Pacheco, interim director of Powerline. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'd also like to introduce Andrew Ross from NMPP Energy, who is participating in the meeting via Zoom. I'm seeking your consideration for this revision to our electrical rates. As you all are aware, staff has been working with Andrew Ross for several months, and proposed possession...
Ms. Griego?
Will be an overall increase of approximately 4.5% to all electric service classifications, with effective date of October 1st, 2022. I would now like to turn it over to Andrew, as he will explain the updated cost of the service study.
Mr. Ross, would you please give us some information?
Yes, first, a sound check. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Appreciate the lead in there, and we're, we're back at it. This time, we're, we're kind of rounding third base here on the electric side. And most, the information presented back in December, when I, when I presented gas and electric in December, it came back, if you remember, and gas had kind of gone on an unprecedented run there in the first and second quarter. So the last time I was here, or speaking to you, was about that. But on the electric side, nothing's really changed much. We're still tracking the 4.5%. We're still targeting October 1st. The bulk of the rate increase is going to be on the customer charge. Currently, Trinidad charges $9, which is, I don't know how else to say it, but grossly under what cost of services and what other utilities have. There hasn't been an increase on the electric side in a while, and if you guys, I think I heard something about gas prices and inflation. I saw 8.5% was trending as a national average this year. I think it'll taper off from there. But 4.5%, actually, for Trinidad, not having a rate increase for several years, this isn't that bad. Actually, the update on electrics went in the other way than gas. Actually, we had updated information from ARPA that now makes us think that we really need to have this adjustment now, but now we're thinking in 2023, we will not need an adjustment. Now, beyond that, we think there still will be some pressures, you know? We recommend you have another update or another study in two years. But we are anticipating maybe some 3, 4, 4.5% increases in the out years. But for the focus today, and for your consideration, we have an ordinance drafted. We updated some street lighting info, thanks to staff, and we updated your power costs. But ultimately, we're still holding to the 4.5% adjustment. And again, you know, we can get into the weeds, as you described earlier, but ultimately, most of this is going on your flat charge, on your customer charge. So, for example, on the residential side, $9 to $14. I did present a customer charge survey that's specific to Colorado. I did present a customer charge survey that's specific to Colorado, showing how, how cheap you are compared in that specific component, in the customer charge, how you compare relatively inexpensive to the rest of the state. And so, this is just good financial prudence of keeping your utility healthy. Right now, cash reserves are a little bit below where we want to see them, but the trend line is in your favor, especially if you do this recommendation, which is, is keeping your revenues in order so that you can continue to maintain your, your electric system. Unfortunately, electricity is not immune to cost pressures. If anything, they have even more of them. So, I do think it's a, I do think overall, it doesn't seem like that, but if you look at kind of a big picture, electricity and the electric departments in, in pretty good shape, and, and will, will continue to be so with this approval of the ordinance we drafted.
Okay. Questions from council?
Sir, so you did conduct a comparative cost overview of cities Trinidad size?
Yeah, actually, we prepare, we do a multi-state rate survey on electricity, water and wastewater. And I think we share an electronic version of that. If not, I'll send another one for you guys. But then we even went further and looked at a specific survey of Colorado communities and what their customer charge is, because that's really what the, the main charge is, or the main difference that we're recommending. And so, we, we have a, kind of a, a large-scale survey, and then we kind of zeroed in specifically to what we designed in this case.
Other questions?
I have no questions.
The only question I have is, we, we discussed the yard lights and the street lights. We had the prices there for the work. We change all of that and get that straightened up to put everything into LED?
Yes.
Home security?
Yeah.
Okay. That's good.
I just had a comment that I'm glad that we're considering this, because I, I think it's what we need as a city to stabilize the power and light, and make sure that that department has what it needs when we get more pressures and things break down, and it's just wise to do that, so I'm glad we're considering it.
Questions?
I don't have questions so much, it's just a few observations, if I may. I think, you know, while it's never popular, I, I do think that it's important, I mean, you know, a lot of cities have made the news recently. For instance, I'm one to think of Wallace Water, it's still applicable, Jackson, Mississippi. You know, those failures didn't happen overnight. And unless we do the due diligence that's here, the utility heads, naturally heads to that demise, you know, infrastructures fail, unless you build the capital to replace that, this is where we're headed. And I do want to just make observation, you said the lion's share of the increase is in the customer charge. And even with the, the raise, we're still in the 50 percentile in Colorado. And I think, I think that's super important to note. I'll try and be brief about this. With, when you have any infrastructure, the larger the city, in some ways, I think they have advantages, because you're, you're sharing basic infrastructure the city needs among many, many rate payers. So the smaller the number of rate payers, the larger the burden per rate payer, in a way, for the basic things. And so, we're still doing really, really well at this, and I think we've done a good job to keep it as manageable as is possible. But I don't, I don't have questions.
You know, what's interesting about, you know, this rate increase puts us right in the middle. But we don't know if other these other communities have looked at rate increases at this time. We can look at it maybe in another year, and we may fall back down to the lower end, that was still reasonable, so that's just interesting. And what was interesting is the, the new iteration that you gave us, we were showing a lot of red with the previous information that you gave us, and like Mr. Ross was saying that in 2023, we may not have to take a, an increase. It looks like with the, what we're doing right now, it's gonna be, it's gonna stabilize, you know, the, the department. What has happened for public information, what has happened in the past, is we've been running deficits for many, many years, and trying to, for the power and life to be able to do what they have to do. And like Mr. Williams once, Mr. Williamson was saying, is the analogy that you were making with Jackson, Mississippi, you know, if we don't do what we have to do now, we're gonna be faced with some possible catastrophic issues down the road, so it's better if we take, we are able to take care of it now. I know it's costing us a little bit more now, but at the same time, we're gonna be able to service our, our public the way they need to be serviced. So, thank you for taking a look at this, and I think it's well done.
Mayor, I had, I had one more question, if I may. So we're, we're looking at a customer charge comparison, sorry, customer charge increase of $5 per month, correct? And then appendix table B1, shows average winter increase, and this is for typical residential electric service. It says average winter increase of 3.2% or 2.7, $2.71 a month. Average summer increase of 3.5% or $2.78 a month. My question is, is that specific for energy payment that's notwithstanding the meter charge, correct?
Yeah, likely. I'm not looking exactly what you're looking at, but you're probably right on, on base that that's the commodity charge. And the commodity charge, kilowatt-hour charge, was not raised. In fact, I, I feel in some cases, we even held the line, and there were no, no adjustments. Were very nominal adjustments on the kilowatt-hour charge. What's happening in the industry, just to give you a, a bigger picture, you know, what's happening in the industry, it's not the actual fuel or the commodity charge of electricity that's increasing, it's actually the infrastructure, it is the ability to use electricity. And so, fixed costs, fixed expenses are what's going up on utilities, and debt, for example, or, or, you know, capital improvements and those types of things. So, the only real fixed revenues that you have is that customer charge. Every, in some cases, you'll have a larger component, a demand component on an industrial customer that can be fixed in some cases. But ultimately, on the revenue side, it's those customer charges that are really that fixed revenue, which means if, if somebody doesn't use any electricity in their home, for example, there's still a meter there, there's still a meter red, there's still a bill generated, they still have the ability to use electricity, and Trinidad has secured that ability for anybody to use as much electricity as they want, and that has a cost to it. And that's really the cost that's going across, not just Trinidad, but everywhere. And so, the most, you know, cost of service, some engineers like myself like to get real fancy and, and really into the weeds and, and really detailed, but sometimes we can simplify this, and, and ultimately, that's what we're doing here, is we need to raise your fixed revenues. But going back to your point, the commodity, the commodity charge, kilowatt-hour charge, is not changing near as much.
I had one final question, if you may. The kilowatt-hour charge, that increase may be reflective of other distribution companies' fixed charge increase, right?
Well, it should be more based on the actual electricity generated. So, that gets into distribution and transmission, but ultimately, also is the fuel, whether it's coal, whether it's wind, whether it's hydro, whether it's uranium in nuclear. That should really be the, the marginal piece, the piece that changes with use. But it, it gets pretty complex. But ultimately, there's three major areas of electricity, the generation, the transmission, and the distribution. You have most control on the distribution side, but you have, well, transmission's a monopoly, you have no control on the transmission side, and then you have a little bit of control on, on who you buy from, your generation side. But there is, the commodity charge really should be more towards the fuel and, you know, some of the transmission and distribution components. So, I mean, I struggle, because I could go into a 30-minute answer to this, but ultimate.
That answered my question, I appreciate it.
Okay.
I have one final question. This is on the, item 14, it says, the interest income on investment, and currently in 2022, they're running, we're continuing to run deficits on that. What's the reason for the increase of the deficits on the interest income on that?
Okay, so, on interest income, since that's actually in an expense, I think you're looking at line 14.
Correct.
That is in an expense item. So, we basically have everything in operations and maintenance, line 12 and above, that's your, your O and M. And then we put in, basically, in an accounting way, we don't look at cash basis, we build in depreciation, interest income, and then your transfers, your payment in lieu of tax or pilot, and some of the transfers to others. So these are regular items that you'll see every year, but I'm not building them into your O and M. So line 14 is actually showing as a negative expense. So that's in an expense area, but since it's actually revenue, it's negative. So that was the only question. I can go in further, but if that's the only question, why is it negative? It's just because it's in an expense area.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Any other questions?
I do.
Last, I was gonna ask, anybody who wants to speak for or against the ordinance? Go ahead. Please, please come forward.
Certainly.
Was ready to give us your name?
My name's Mike Yopam. Phil, I've talked to you, Aaron, I've talked to you. I spoke to Mike when he was in his position previously. Since January, I've been trying to put solar on my home, and the company that is trying, they put the solar on, is trying to figure out the net metering policy in the city of Trinidad. This gentleman may know the answer, I don't know. So, normally, net metering works that I put collectors on my house, I bank what I produce that's in excess of what I consume, and every month or annually, depending on how you do it, I get that credit paid back to me. These people will not put the solar on my home, because they can't figure out what's going on in the city of Trinidad. And so, I want to know, either through this gentleman or you guys, what is the net metering policy?
Mayor, if I could, please, it's not really responsive to the question of, are you in favor of or opposed?
And, and I apologize, that may not be in case.
No, sir, I, I appreciate that. And what I would ask, I'm not sure it's my position, but if you would please talk to staff, we have a number of people that, that can help you.
Boy, have I talked to staff.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to take this forum for bringing this up, but it's been a problem.
Okay. And you also may want to, like, our next regular council meeting, if you feel like you're not having your questions answered, you may want to sign up for petitions or communications as you speak, and do that. But otherwise, I, you know, there's a lot of staff here, and we can all talk about your, your issue and.
I, I agree. Andrew, are you still there?
Yeah, I can just say this, I'll respect what I just heard on both sides. I'm happy to help. It was actually, you know, we had a little staff, staff transition, and it was actually myself that said, I really wanted to get this ordinance and this rate through before we tackled net metering, which we're happy to help there, and we can help there, but I didn't want to mix the two, so I was hoping we could get through this, and we were going to, I was gonna work with Linda and, and Dave and others on, on this exact issue. And there's things the city should know, and there's things that customers like that gentleman should know, and I'm happy to help, I just didn't want to mix the two.
Thank you. So that's, that's your question? Okay.
That's great, thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak for or against? Not? Hearing is closed. Item D1, first reading of an ordinance, repealing and reenacting 12-12 of Article 12, Article 2 of Chapter 12 of the Code of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, for the purpose of adjusting the rates for electric service, power, and energy, and setting the hearing date for consideration of said ordinance at 6:00 p.m. on September the 20th, 2022. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Entertaining motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call vote, please.
Tabana?
Yes.
Oh, uh, Diego? Yes. Sorry.
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item D, miscellaneous business, first reading of an ordinance, vacating all of that alley right-of-way located in Block 10, James Addition, to the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. Setting hearing date for consideration of said ordinance at 6:00 p.m. on September the 20th, 2022. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce it.
Entertaining motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Hall?
Good evening, Mayor, city council staff. This is a proclamation or intent to vacate an alley that's located on the alleyway of James Addition, Lot 10, lots 18 through 34, and lots 1 through 10. This location is 1410 Santa Fe Trail. You may have identified it as Linda's Laundry. Mr. Louis Reno is looking for a access to this alleyway that bisects his property on both sides of the alley. And the backside of the alley is owned by the city of Trinidad, and we have, on behalf of the city of Trinidad, we don't see any problem with vacating this entire alley, as mentioned.
Mr. Reno, you want to come forward, and do you have any, anything else you would like to say, please?
No, I just, I was noticing as Christmas talking about this, you talked about vacating the alleyway from lots 18 through 34, and then 1 through 10, but I believe also, those lots that would be encompassed by an ownership to the city of Trinidad as well.
Yes, and we're asking to, to vacate the entire alleyway and not just your own property.
So half would be vacated, the city of Trinidad have to, my ownership.
Yes.
Okay. Council, any questions? No questions? Okay. No more questions, no help? Called?
No questions.
Okay.
That was easy.
Call vote, please?
Tabana?
Yes.
Diego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 8B, consideration of the quote received for the city's street striping and pavement markings project for $198,266. Entertaining motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
What do you have for us?
Bless you, sir.
Finally got somebody.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Good evening, Mr. Jones.
As you know, we went out to bid on July 8th for striping in the city of Trinidad, pavement markings, we got zero bids. Audra found a, something on the, where the CDOT was coming down to these counties, and this company wrote safe. Actually, they had, we'd sent them a advertisement, they didn't bid the project back then, but then they came back and, I don't know if they missed it, or they were extremely busy at the time. So they, they actually gave us a quote to come in and stripe, do our pavement markings, for a fee of $198,000.
$266.
Yeah, where we at? Yeah, $266, thank you. So, I know that was a, a big concern, and we finally, they said they can get on this by the end of September. So, that's where I come to for tonight.
Okay. Questions from council?
No.
Which streets? Main streets?
Oh, it's, it's, we, we're hitting Main, we're hitting Santa Fe Trail, we're hitting Five Points, we're hitting, it's, it's a lot of city striping, centerline striping and pavement markings. So, we came in, our crew did, and, and we did put some pavement markings at commercial because it was so bad, but we didn't have the time to, to get all of them, so that's what we're gonna do, is we got the, the thermoplastic markings that go down, and all we did was paint.
Is, okay, is that gonna be longer wearing?
We, this particular paint is, is the, oh, shoot, yes, it's the better paint, the.
Epoxy type.
Thank you, Danny. Epoxy, it's epoxy. They didn't use epoxy, in my understanding, in, in 2020, that's why it didn't last as long, but it is the epoxy-type paint, which is the longer lasting. But it is the epoxy type paint, which is the longer lasting. We're going to ask them also if they would, they grind first and potentially could increase the cost. But it's nice because it recesses the stripe and when we go over with the plows, it doesn't hit it. So that, this cost does not include the pre-grinding. But we were going to ask them for a fee on that.
Is this within what we had envisioned?
Well, this is, it actually, our estimated cost on this was, you know, it was an estimate. It was around two hundred eighty to two ninety. So they came in quite a bit cheaper. But this is coming out of our capital improvement project, which is attached to First Street. So it would, we have five point four set aside, million dollars for that project. We have not bid it. We're getting closer. So this will come off of it, come out of it.
So if we do the grinding, we'll still be within the two hundred eight thousand dollars?
I don't know. I'm open.
Okay.
So all we can do is ask and see what they, what they would charge us to grind. And then I could come back to you all if you wanted to make that determination. I think it's gonna, it will help. Now, obviously, we can't grind on the brick streets. We can only grind where we have asphalt or concrete. We don't have concrete, but asphalt, anything like that. We were afraid if we grind on our bricks, we'll probably lose the surface and eventually the brick will start falling apart.
No further. Any questions?
Thank you for saying this.
Yeah.
Thank Audrey. She's the one that found this. And I called them and they were like, geez, how did we miss that? So.
It's a huge discount. What's the, now, what's the grinding process for?
What is the grinding process?
Yeah.
It's real similar to what they, best way I can describe it is they go in and they take off an eighth of an inch to a quarter of an inch, the width of the stripe. It's recessed, so then when we come in and paint, the marking is down below. Our blade or our stone plows are right over the top of it. They're way, we don't braid the paint.
Okay. I have a little bit of experience with this, which makes my question, my question probably more dangerous. But up at the facility, we have put the thermoplastic applications down. And when, when those are done, I mean, they're fairly raised, and which would make your process that you're describing important, the grinding of them. My question is, will the thermoplastic applications be done on brick? Because to me, that seems especially vulnerable.
They, they will be. It's, I mean, we could if we wanted to ask the paint, but it's, and it makes it hard because those bricks move around and stuff, so.
Yeah, that's, but, I mean, that's part of my concern too, because by no means am I pretending to be an expert. But those, they're pretty rigid, the thermoplastic application. So if you have the little bricks moving any at all, I mean, it's bound to separate. Is there any consideration given to maybe use paint, like you'd mentioned, instead of the thermal application for, for brick?
That's a thought. It is.
I mean, obviously, you guys are the experts, and that's just, I thought it'd be worth consideration.
One, one of the main things on the brick also, and thermoplastic, is you have to have a dry sealed surface. And bricks, we lay and put sand in between. So it's, that moisture gets in the cracks, gets under the thermoplastic, freezes, and that's why you get it to pop up.
So you are more likely to use paint?
I've been recommending what you are, to paint the bricks rather than thermoplastic.
All right.
Everything else that you could grind, it makes sense to use thermoplastic because you could go over the top. Main deal is the bricks and that not getting a good seal between your surface and thermoplastic.
Okay, thank you.
And I think probably the biggest area of concern would be that commercial area where there's so much brick. And then, of course, First Street, when that gets done, there's going to be a lot of brick in there too. But that's going to be after the fact, you know, so.
Yeah, that striping will be part of the project.
I have one question. I mean, so the, the grinding, would that be a supplemental to this?
It would be additional. It's not in the one hundred ninety.
So it'd be approached as a separate ordinance?
Correct. We would ask them for what, what additional fee would be if we decide to grind.
Okay, thank you.
I think we just have to come back and for additional requisition for resolution. Or would the resolution probably rather than an ordinance change?
Sir, yes.
Okay. Probably a resolution change? Okay. Any other questions?
I could call them tomorrow and find out. The problem is, is we don't have it, maybe we do. I have to check with Nate, broken out for where the brick is. We have all quantities, but we don't have it separated where we have asshole and brick.
Yeah, just the one thing that you'd have to do is identify what areas you're, you know, are going to be excluded so that you get an exact price. And I think what we could do is, if you call them tomorrow and you get a price for it, what we can do is at a work session next week, we could have a special meeting if we have to approve additional funding. Because we don't want to delay this any further, because if we delay it, you know, down the road another month, we can run into cold weather and create an additional problem, so.
And just as a heads up, council, we found out from C dot, we have a grant for the bike line striping, and we wanted to tag onto this project. And Don Skeng had told us we have to go back out to bid. We can't go out to this contractor. So what we're going to do is go out to bid and tell these guys, hey, did the project.
I was going to ask you about that. Any other questions? Okay. Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Thanks, man.
Item nine, council reports. Mr. DeBono?
Well, the Los Anamos County Veterans Council, they're sponsoring a free resource fair and a veteran's standout. If you don't know what a veteran's standout is, it's an event that provides supplies and services for homeless veterans, food shelter, health screenings, and so forth. It's going to be September seventeenth from ten to two P M. at Fort Wuzhun. They're going to have a food truck, and you can come and learn about all the resources that are available in Los Anamos County, as well as live music. And it's free to the public, not just veterans' families.
What date is that again?
Uh, September seventeenth from ten to two. That same day, that night, they're having a Trinidad's Got Talent. So I want everybody to make sure to get your application. And that's from seven to nine at Fort Wuzhun.
Can you jog?
Any bass players in here or any musicians?
No.
Bobby.
I play the radio.
But that's going to be from seven to nine, so two pretty nice events for, especially the free resource fair, to see what kind of resources we have here in the county for people that are unaware, as well as the veterans' standouts. Yeah.
No one. No, they'd be home.
Just like the thing was the show's coming out and talking about golf and guys at Parks and Rec to come out tonight.
I did attend the most recent ARPA meeting. You know, I don't have a lot to report back on that. It was mainly administrative in nature. Some rebalancing, some funds took place to keep that organization healthy going forward. And as was alluded to earlier, the forward look on the markets is changing significantly. And it may foreshow lowering of rates, you know, well in the future. But it's a healthier outlook than was forecasted. I think it would be premature for us to bank on that though. So as we continue down that road, I will continue to keep all of you guys apprised. The other thing that I wanted to ask, and I apologize, is potentially revisiting something that we have already mentioned, but I think, I think it's just exceptionally important. As we move forward, you know, the Parks and Rec Board mentioned something about a transitioning economy. And I'm not challenging that from marijuana to outdoor. But I think it's very, very important that, because words that we say become, ideas become words, which become actions. And I think unless we, as council, take a very forward approach to this, it could be a problem. And I would really like to see if we could revisit with some real intention the idea of how do we cause, and by cause, I mean take specific actions to move Trinidad to a, to our space economy. That would be, in my mind, a work session that's devoted to that with all the key players. And the deliverable outcome would be something to the effect of writing an R F P that would cause measurable waypoints to be defined. Because as all of us can attest to, in private business, you identify where you are, where you want to be, the timeline that's going to take to get there, and you lay out steps to get there. Until we have that, we're basically shooting from the hip and hoping to hit the target. And I think it's important for Trinidad, because referencing back to the Parks and Rec Board, again, not that I disagree with them, but the marijuana industry has been an important aspect of our tax base. If we can cause more people to be here on a daily basis, we may very likely save much more of the marijuana industry than if we don't increase people to be here. So I think it's vitally important. I think I should really take steps towards that. The other thing that I wanted to say, and this is not in reaction to a lot of stuff that's been around lately, but I strongly feel this. One of, one of the steps we need to take is to find some way to increase outdoor dining, whether that's the alley, you know, what was that alley? Alley A? Alley A, other potential sources, and even those little parklets or whatever they are called. I think it's something that we can revisit as a council. And, and it's not rocket surgery. I mean, that was intentional rocket surgery. We can, we can work out obstacles and hurdles, and I think it would be a great boon for our city. That's the two things that I wanted to say. And then, secondly, I don't know.
Thirdly.
Yeah. Thirdly, I wanted to ask Mr. Ruger, if you can, if it's appropriate to just give a public update as to the progress of First Street, so that people listening in can have that, if that's appropriate.
Okay. We'll get that when we get to your referendum. Anything else?
No, Mayor, that was enough.
Stereotyped.
Lastly, you are correct about your first question that you brought up. And one of the first questions, things that we have to do, I believe, is have a work session with Parks and Rec to go over some of this information, but then I think then we need a deeper dive into that. And while there's all talk to Mr. Ruger as to how we move forward with that in the near future. But, and your second part, or the third part, whichever one it was, as far as outdoor dining, we'll take that into consideration as well. And that's something that has been on my mind as to, before Mr. Valentine left, we had discussion on that as well. From my end, just to let everybody know, we had, of course, the X eleven ribbon cutting a couple of weeks ago. That was very well attended. The governor was here, Mr. Ruger, and I think Mr. DeBono was there. They were there. Who else was there?
I was there.
You were there?
I got a picture with the governor.
So it was good to see you guys got to meet the governor and maybe some of our other people. A little week ago, I attended, like I mentioned earlier, the state outdoor recreation was here in Trinidad. And it was good to see Connor there. It's somebody that goes back to Hickamper day. I knew him pretty well way back then, so he is now the director, so it was good to see him. Attended the chamber luncheon. I also did a presentation that I mentioned to you, the Big Sky presentation, even though I'm not on the Southwest chief or the new district commissioner, but they asked me to do a presentation on what I knew. And I did a, I think like a seven minute presentation. And it was virtual from Montana, in Montana. And I was lucky I didn't go because I got an email last Monday saying several people that attended ended up with COVID. So I was lucky that I did go to Montana. Also attended the Corps of Engineers master plan. And just a reminder is we have until the September the seventeenth to submit any questions that you might have or additions that you think are necessary, that you guys would like to have some input on the master plan for the state, Trinidad Lake State Park or that area. Last week, and I'll let Mr. Ruger dive deeper on this, we had a meeting with some C dot officials on broadband. That was, we'll also cover that if you would. Also, this last Saturday, I attended the state fair, mayor's day. And I went up with one question in mind, and I was told by the lady that runs the Labor Day viewing that, that market, that the reason why we couldn't have a, because I've been questioning, why don't we have a carnival at least have? And she said it was because the state fair was saying that, it was because the state fair was dictating that we could not have one here, and now the other is. So I went up and I talked to the president of the, of the state fair and asked her, is this true? And she said, no, it's not true. I'm not sure where this lady got her information, but that is absolutely false. She said there's Ferris Health or Carnival's Health all over Colorado for Liberty. I'm not sure where she got that information, but it is incorrect. Attended the tourism board, and one thing they're in consideration, I can't remember if they're, if they're going to code, okay that tomorrow, if they already did, but they're looking at a kiosk or two, electronic kiosks in town. I know they're looking at one, they're thinking maybe two of them, so it'd be nice. And they'll be able to sell ads and they'll get a return on some of the, some of the ads that they sell on. Not a whole lot, but it'll help offset a little bit. So that was all I have. Mr. Ruger?
Thank you, Mayor Wolfers. I just wanted to thank the council and the staff and the community for the warm welcome. I'm on week three at this point. And it's, it's been great to, I didn't work on the community yet. And already met the governor, so that's pretty good for a city manager's first couple of weeks on the job. So yes, I'm happy to talk about some of the projects we have going on. Let's start with First Street. So right now, our engineering department is, our public works department is finishing some final design work for the next phase of the project. We're also working with our power and light staff to do some underlying utility work that's going to be in tandem with that. We expect that all to be done within the next week or two, and then we'll get that bid out. And once we get that bid out, we will have a much better timeline as to what that project will look like. But one thing that I want to start doing that I will commit to researching and figuring out a good way is that, to your point, Councilmember Williamson, to get more public information about, out about our, our capital projects. So that way, the public can get some more up to date information than having to call and ask what's going on. So we're going to look into that going forward as well and be able to hopefully communicate with the public better on those. So when I have the updated information on our bid and we have a better timeline, I'll get that information out to you ASAP, and we'll look at getting that information out to the public as well. The mayor and I did meet with C dot last week to discuss broadband. So the update there is C dot has finished, I think, the installation of their fiber line that stretches down the I twenty-five corridor to New Mexico. We have an opportunity to tap into that line, and they said that two fibers would run the whole city for a long time. I think they said the strand is, if memory serves, it was a hundred and forty-two or a hundred and forty-seven fiber in, in the cable, and we would have access to two of those to, to do whatever we want. So we will be working with them. There's some grant funding that's available for extending fiber infrastructure for municipalities that we're looking to at this point. And so next week at the work session, I asked Audra to put an item on the agenda for mobile broadband update. So we're going to do a little bit more research, and I'll get you some more municipal broadband information next week in your work session as well.
One thing that was interesting about that, we actually had three people that were there that were, that's what they did. They're state level. So we got some really clear ideas as to where we can go. We talked about that, about what to bring forward at the work session.
We did. I mean, I think it's really exciting news for whatever we choose to do with municipal broadband, but the access is going to be there, and that's going to poise us for hopefully getting in the near future. I mean, I think it's really exciting news for whatever we choose to do with municipal broadband, but the access is going to be there, and that's gonna poise us for hopefully getting, in the near future, some better internet services to our residents and businesses. Last thing I have is, we have a work session next week. I'll be reaching out to you all individually, um, to potentially request that we move the time up for that work session. It's a very busy work session right now, although we did have an item that fell off the agenda today. So we, I'll reach out to you individually and see if that's feasible, but it'll also be predicated on, uh, development of, of that agenda. So for now, I plan on five o'clock, but if it gets extremely busy, I may reach out to you and have that conversation.
Mr. DeBonne?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. So just a couple of things. One is, um, I will be sending you an email soon in response to your questions, Mayor, from the special meeting. You had three questions, and those were, getting a quizzical look, so I'm gonna consider that my, my invitation. ADA compliance on the, uh, the business, uh, the, the incentives for, um, you know, whether, why there was an ADA compliance, I'm not orienting it very well, but that was question number one. Quiet title. Uh, and question number two was quiet title, the no man's land and the hanging tree area, and also the rezoning or expansion of the core zone, um, the, the core zone of Trinidad, the, right, the historic preservation of the, uh, the, that, that area and in expansion of that. So the email you answered is, um, in response to those questions. Speaking of work session items, I just want to let you know that Ms. Gillespie has been working very hard in getting information on consumption clubs and all the questions. And I don't think that it would be appropriate to have it on Monday, I mean, it sounds quite busy already, but I just wanted, and that is something that Mr. Ruger may not know about. But, um, as you'll recall, I think we had a work session and there were a number of questions, we asked for a lot of information, and Ms. Gillespie especially has given a lot of information, um, in, in a response to that. And we'll have that ready for a, a work session, uh, for you in the near future. Um, other than that, welcome to Mr. Ruger. I said that at the special meeting, but now that we have a regular meeting, great to have him here.
You have a couple of other things, uh, do you know?
Oh, no, 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 you can add.
I don't have to.
Do you have anything done? No, just kidding.
How is the update on the, on the space fee project coming, or are they, see the real post of that?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, I actually got the opportunity to work the space today with, with Molly. And yeah, uh, I'm glad you asked on that. They're, uh, finishing the floor right now in the, uh, Bay Area, and they're also doing some roof work, which is supposed to be done in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we have tenants who are already moving stuff in to their, to their shops, so, so lots of really good progress. We're waiting on a piece of HVAC equipment that is supposed to be delivered next week, but as we know, the supply chain is what it is. So, uh, but everything is moving along tremendously well, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to be, complete with that project in the next few weeks.
Do you have any update on the metering project? I know there's been delays and, and I know some problems even with the company that's doing them, from what I hear.
And Mayor, I do not have an update on that, but I will look into that and get some information out to you all.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I was really, I saw Jim looking at this letter I put on everybody's desk. Sorry about that. I was a scoop for that portion of the meeting. But, uh, I had somebody come in and hand-deliver that letter, because it was mailed to City Hall, but it was mailed just before the holidays. She didn't know, it was Paula Manini, and there's an issue with the Bloom and Backhouse museums, the maintenance on them. And she's requesting the city's assistance in getting the governor and, uh, History Colorado and to get on board, to get the problems with the museums rectified. She said that this individual that wrote this letter said there were even, uh, crushed water bottles just thrown on the floor. I mean, it's not minor maintenance issues, have you heard that, Jim?
I just know it's, it's significantly declined in the last few years. It used to have better funding, and when we lost Kirby, who was running, everything was, uh, having money, but yeah, it needs significant attention, so I'm glad she wrote this up.
Now, you know, when you mentioned that to me today, I was kinda wondering, you know, what is our role in this, other than maybe with History Colorado, just asking them to maybe take, uh, you know, a look at it, see what they can do for us?
Yeah.
That would be the only thing I think that we can do, maybe push them in that direction.
It hurt. It couldn't hurt, probably.
It couldn't hurt, no. Mr. Williamson's talking about tourism, that was a huge draw for tourism, and that's something we need to deal with.
But I think that that would be something that maybe, you know, a letter sent to tourism, and I can sign off on it and send it off. Maybe then she has sent a letter to the governor as well, would I? First I would, the governor.
I wonder if we could get our lobbyists to contact the governor's office?
I will see him Friday, I think I'll see him Friday.
Just to ask him if there's something we can do.
And you're referencing the letter from Nancy Humphrey, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I heard Paula Manini.
Yes.
But I just, I, I saw the name of her as Nancy Humphrey.
I guess they were personal friends.
Oh, okay.
And, um, the Humphreys have come to Trinidad year after year to, to visit the museums. And I think one of the Humphreys has a, has a, uh, familiar connection to the Backhouse, is what I understand.
Oh, wow.
Okay, there's nothing else, motion to adjourn?
Still.
Second?
Second.
Call of vote?
Devota?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. We will see you next Monday.